Seven o'clock. Follow this meeting to order and start the place of leave.
Flag the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Alright, welcome everyone. Uh, we'll give you a few uh. Um, basic information. There's an exit over here. There's an exit that you came in at. Um, please silence all your phones and all your other gizmos, your watches and all that, so we're not. Interrupting anything. We will be following the agenda that's on the table. Make sure everybody has signed in, please. If you haven't signed in, there's a sign in sheet up here. Um, please sign in and make sure that uh, you get a. Get a uh, agenda so you know what we're doing and how we're doing it. Um. We will be following the rules and procedures adopted by the board on January fourth, twenty twenty-three. Um, next item would have been approval of minutes. But since uh, we don't have. Uh, a majority of people who are at the meeting. We will not be able to do that. We'll do the minutes at the next meeting. So, um, the order of business will be what's in the. Uh, on the agenda, but before we get started with PB zero seven zero two dash twenty-two, the preliminary three lot re subdivision. Public hearing. Well, I wanted to kind of give you guys a summary of. What's going on, why we're doing what we're doing and how we're doing it. So everybody's on the same sheet of music. Um, first off, what we have today is we have um, Adrian and Aaron, our members of our planning board. So there is three, so there is. Three people on the board tonight. And then we have Ron Brand, our director of development, and Dan. Delbiore, our code enforcement officer, as well as our clerk to the board, John Robicella. Um, the meeting process is going to be relatively simple. Once I get done. Telling you how the whole process is going to go long term. Um, we will let the applicants uh, or their representative tell us a little bit about the project. We will then let the. Uh, staff give us some comments. Oh, I'm sorry. We have the fire department back here too. Um, so we have the fire department representative as well. Um, and then what we'll do is once the staff has had their comments, we will then. Open up the public hearing. So, so that's basically it. So this application came to us and. The process is a little more complex maybe than some in that. Uh, we follow the same process for everything. The first issue that has to be addressed on any application. Is the environmental record. Called the state environmental. Uh, control review. So what we will begin tonight is some. Actions as it relates to the environmental record. Um, the secret process will start tonight. And it starts tonight with this board requesting to other. Um, so what's, what's the right word, Ron? Um, other.
Involved agents.
Involved agencies. There you go. I'm. Losing it already. The involved agencies, which in this case is really the zoning board. Asking them to allow us to be our intent to be the lead agency, which means we would then. Be the group that would be charged with establishing environmental record on this application. So the environmental record. Needs to be completed. Before it can then be sent or that the ZBA can then review the variance request that they had in front of them. So. Once we declare our intent to be a lead agency, the ZBA will then say, okay, we're okay with that, or maybe they say they're not okay with that. Um, but we'll. At the next time after that, we'll make a determination of whether we'd be the lead agency and we would establish that. At that point, we start the seeker process. Uh, the environmental record. Um, I can tell you that. The documents that we have received based on staff input, based on my review. Um, is not complete to the point where we would be able to start immediately with an environmental review. Um, we would require additional information based on our code or request to uh. To waive those from the applicant. And once we had enough of a environmental or enough of a, of data. That would allow us to do an environmental review between that plus. The public's input on the environmental record. We would then be at the point of making a determination of if all of the issues with this project can be mitigated. From an environmental standpoint. It's just pretty simple. We've done this on. Hundreds of them over my twenty-some odd years doing this. So at some point, we'll make that determination. For the environmental record, at which time we, the zoning board of appeals. Can review their zoning or variance request and any additional variances that might come up during the environmental record. Um. So then, once they have made that determination. Then we can then take and review the actual. Subdivision application and review it from a. Technical standpoint from that. So that's the short. Review. Staff has given us a detailed review. Ron has spent some time. I think it's a four-page document now, Ron, uh, that we will post online. It gives you more detail on what we're doing and why we're doing it. So, um. That's pretty much the short version of what we're doing. So when we get done with everything and we look for public input tonight. What we're looking for are facts. That would affect the public, the environmental record on this project because that's the first phase of this. Once we get past that, once the ZBA has done their piece of it, then we can look at more of the. Mechanics of the subdivision and that. Did I miss anything, Ron, on the general overview?
No, but I'm more concerned right now that. We don't have the applicant or his engineer or.
Oh, she's been in the back. She's here. I saw her come in with, with, with the uh. The poster board, so I knew she was there.
Okay.
So with that, we will ask the applicant's representative to come forward and give us a review of the project from a. Well, give us a review of the project, what they're asking us to do. Then we'll turn it over to staff. Then we'll get the people in the rooms feedback. Then we'll get the people online's feedback. If there's anybody online and uh. There's one person online, so. Okay, you please identify yourself and tell us a little bit about this project, please.
Stephanie Albrecht, APB engineering.
Okay, Stephanie?
Here and this camera from our office doesn't help you guys or calls up the public tonight, so. I am here to fill in and help answer questions based on my abilities. Um, so this property is a two-two forty thousand crossing. It is two-part building thing. Um, a little over all acres total. Looking to subdivide into three parcels. Um, you know, one would be three or four acres, two large acres and four acres plus the rest. Uh, these would all be not approved building law.
Correct.
They are sold out, which should be developed or a lot more intensive review on. Utility and environmental impacts, you know, open line and all of that. So for, don't need to discuss any of that. I obviously, there's no.
Right.
Building plans or anything at this point. Um, you did a great job. So we're, I believe, secret process. I appreciate that. Dive into that process. Um, I guess just one question that I think like. He's understood. So is that even gonna go to uh, ZBA for them to confirm that they're okay with you guys being lead agency?
Correct.
And therefore by default at the next meeting, you will be lead agency if they don't say.
That would allow us to accept lead agency, declare ourselves lead agency. And then begin the secret process, which will take whatever it takes at that point. Yes.
Okay. Um, one minor point of clarification on the. Draft resolutions that I saw, which I can just kind of title on the acreage of the action items, like it says. Six thousand four hundred thirty-seven square feet. That should be six point four three seven acres.
Okay. John will fix that in a heartbeat.
Just to clarify that we're not talking about six thousand four hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Um. So obviously we can go to ZBA for the one, um, one lot for the lot with. Uh, the other two parcels are fine for that lot with.
A good summary. I mean, it's, it's early in the process. Again, we haven't got into the environmental record yet and uh. But everybody can see that is the, the layout of what they're proposing at this point. Um, and we'll turn it over to Sam, Ron.
Yeah, I've drafted two resolutions for the planning board tonight. The first one is. You classify the action as unlisted. And to identify the ZBA as an involved agency. And to give them notice. Of your declared intent to be the lead agency.
Right.
And the other resolution. Is a resolution to continue this public hearing. To, I believe, August second.
Yeah, we're open if the zoning board of appeals at their next meeting and. Either agree or disagree with our intent to be lead dates. Anything else, Ron? Well, Ryan and Ron, like you said, put a nice summary together for us. We will post that on the website so you'll have access to the detailed list of. Our process of what we're doing, so. Any other, Ron?
Nope.
Dan, our code enforcement.
Uh, no, this is, uh, as you stated earlier, procedural, uh. What we're doing today and giving the opportunity to talk about the environmental record. And so this is just the first step.
Cool. Fire. Preliminary for that, eh?
Yeah.
Still current. Okay. The next phase of this is, since this is a public hearing, oh, and by the way, in the record is we have received the. Petition from the residents on this. It's in the record. We have that. We appreciate feedback at all points in this process. What we're gonna do now is we're gonna go into the public hearing part where you can. Well, I would like you to, I'm gonna turn on the room mics now. Let me give you a little feedback on this room mic. If I turn on this room mic, it's gonna pick up every single thing that is said. If you're gonna have little sidebars, it's gonna end up on the. On the YouTube channel, so. Try to keep your sidebars to a minimum unless you really want that to be part of the record. So. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna open it up. I'll ask you to, to stand, tell us who you are, tell us your address. And then give us some information about this application. Specifically tonight, we're looking at the environmental record, which means we're looking for facts. That would help us in the process of looking at the environmental record, knowing that. This public hearing will be continued and continued and continued until we feel we have had enough information. To do the environmental record and that we have heard enough from the. Citizens, we've heard your concerns, that we can make a determination on the. Um, on the, the environmental record. I believe once we get into the actual application, it'll be a public hearing as well. The subdivision or not.
Well, this is this.
Oh, this is the one for everything. Okay. So we'll keep it continuing on until we feel we have enough information to make our determination. So. If you missed something tonight, you can do it at the next time we have a public hearing and go from there. So with that, is there, I'm gonna turn on a room mics. A sidebar. Okay, so go ahead and whoever wants to speak, stand up, give me your name and your address and tell us what you need us to know.
My name is Pat Dispenza. I live at six, two, three, seven Pheasant Crossing, which it's not shown on the map, but it's one of the laps directly across the street.
Okay, Dan.
I do have a question. When you're asking for facts about the environmental record, can you be more specific of what you're talking about?
State environmental review requires us to look at environmental issues for this application. So for instance, this. Application specifically has steep slope to it. It has some wetland to it.
Right.
So there are issues that we will be looking at. Based on probably where the sighting of the residences would be on the lots, so we could determine. What environmental that would affect. Whether or not there were going to be any uh, accessory structures allowed, those types of things. I mean, just kind of rattling off things that come to my mind. But those are the types of things that we would need information on. Certainly, we can see it, we can look at it, and we understand it. We have engineers, we have staff. But we're looking for feedback from the residents on the project in general, but more importantly tonight, the environmental record. When we get to the specifics of the actual subdivision, we'd look for a little bit more. So does that help any?
Um, yes. So I'll just make a statement. You know, we're looking at the environment. We live in the environment. It's what we can see. Right. Our neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
And when you look at this map and what people can actually see in their neighborhood.
Right.
Whether you're driving by or you live there and you're looking. Everything, once it hits the dropdown, is not really part of the neighborhood. That, that's near the creek and it's a wetland. So we don't feel that. You should consider that it's a seven acre parcel when the neighborhood is really the small parcel that you're showing us. So I just wanna make that statement. Thank you very much for your feedback. Anybody else have any other comments they'd like to share with us tonight? Anyone good, sir? Anybody?
Yeah, I, I do.
Go ahead. Spell out your name and your address, please.
Pete LeBlanc, six, two, six, two, Pheasants Crossing. I live.
Okay, Pete.
Right around the corner from this. And I just wanna, uh, kinda second what Pat said that. Um, I don't have a lot of facts to talk about environmental records, but. When I look at, at this section. Can I walk over here?
You can just speak up so we can pick it up on all the mics.
Okay, so. I know this is a big piece of property in its entirety, but like Pat said, um. And I wish this map had showed the lots directly across from it because. When most people see the property, it's, it's really this rectangle here.
Okay.
And there are two lots directly across from.
Correct.
These two lots.
Yep.
And to try to make this into three lots. Um, you know, it, it doesn't make any sense to me. I don't have environmental facts. For today, but I just, it just seems like a crazy idea. Um, I know that's not scientific. But. Right, right. All this is pretty unusable. And I know we're not talking about structures today, but it would be pretty tricky. To put a residence. Back here. I know it can be done. Um, but it, it would be tricky and. Um. I guess that's it.
Well, and, and that's exactly the part of what we'll do next when we get into the environmental review. We'll probably, well, we'll, we'll ask the applicant to go back to the code and work with staff to make sure all the information we need is on the drawing. Specifically, what we'll probably ask, and although I won't. Guarantee this, is for some idea of where the house set sightings would be, so we could have a picture of. Where they would be, especially related to these steep slopes. So we could kind of make a determination of if you're gonna cite it there. Will there be enough room to put accessory structures, those types of things? Because. The last thing in the world we would want would be to create a situation. Where sighting of the uh, the home would. Require or would the, the, whoever cited the home would think, well. We're gonna get a variance and put it in our side yard because we can't put it in our backyard. So there'll be some issues like that. Those discussions will go on. So I appreciate that feedback. Thank you. Anybody else like to make a comment? Yes, sir.
Uh, my name's Brett Boone. I live at sixty-two fifty Pheasants Crossing.
What was the first name?
Greg.
Okay.
And I actually live on, as you're looking at the bottom of that, I'm just. Okay, this lot right here is my lot.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so I just wanna make sure that I'm a little dense. The lots are gonna be smaller. Whether they say they're gonna build there or not, we got the letter from them with the pictures of the houses. So we know that's the intent. Why would you buy a lot like that if you're not gonna build on it? Um, and. Yes, there's, I would have many concerns about trying to build something on back. That, that middle lot, although I'm sure engineers could come in and put up structures and that's where the environmental issues would really be impacted from my perspective. Um. So my concern, when are we gonna be able to talk about? Them coming back for, for asking for more variance because the setbacks and setups from my property line. If they wanna put a house in that upper part of that lot that's right next to mine, I don't see how they can put a house in there. Unless it's what would be called a shotgun house, maybe. Very long and very narrow. It's gonna not break my prop, you know, come close to my property, like too, too close for the variances we have in place. So it's. So there're gonna be an area in these meetings that I can address.
I believe that will be part of our discussion on the environmental record of how, how the sightings of the houses will be out there, so we can make a determination too. I mean. Going back to the ZBA of whether or not it'll be a single variance or whether there'll be multiple variances required because of the sightings of the houses. But when it gets right down to it, the act, once the subdivision is either approved or disapproved. Um, then the next phase would be the actual site plan, which would come back to us. And then again, if for some reason they tried to put too large a house on there based on what our discussions were. Then we'd have to go back to the zoning board of appeals again for a variance request. So that's pretty much the process. Did I miss anything, Ron? Okay. I've been doing this for twenty-five years, so every once in a while, uh, you know, a blind squirrel finds a nut. So I, I think I figured this out a little bit. So again, what this is the exact same process we've used on projects. For many, many, many years. It's what the state requires us to do. Secret is a mandated requirement. It's not something we just said, okay, let's do it. No, we do it after time. This happens to be an unlisted action, which requires. A little bit more discussions, maybe. So, uh, yeah. I just want everybody to understand that this is a process. It takes. Eight periods of time. We're gonna do it right. Cause we always do. It's just the way we do it. Anybody else have any comments, questions? From the public? Okay, go ahead. You can add one more.
One more.
Go ahead.
Today's comments are strictly about the environmental record.
Well, certainly we'll take other comments. I'm not going to say you can't tell us something else, but. The data or the facts we get on the public record or the, or the environment are the things we're addressing first. If you wanna give us additional information. Then, or additional facts or whatever, then we'll listen to that. I can't tell you, you can't tell me. But at this point, it's a little premature. In the process, but we'll listen to the input.
I, I don't have, I don't have any facts.
Okay.
Yeah, actually. I, I probably regret saying this. I don't see a huge environmental impact of putting a field and putting it like dividing it up, I mean, again.
Okay.
In more pieces.
Again, you're right. It is lines on paper. We said that many times. This is a lines on paper kind of exercise. Until you start throwing in the actual physical dwelling drawings, then it becomes more challenging, but. That's why when we do the environmental record, we have to go a little bit farther.
Yeah, I, I have a lot of other concerns about the project in general, but, but. Environmental impact that I, I don't, I can't really say much about that.
That's why I tried to make sure I educated you on what the process. Go ahead, uh, Pat.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Has there ever been a plan presented to build houses below the grade in that whole property?
I don't think the, I think the answer is no. We didn't see a. We did see a three lot before. We saw a four lot before. And the applicant pulled those, both of them. But both of them, a three and a four lot were pulled before. Before it actually came for our review and what we did. And believe, right? Stop me when I'm wrong, there's that. Believe.
So all, all the land that's down below, is that considered a flood plain or a creek access? What, what is that land?
We'll have to do that. We'll have to do that. I don't know if you show the floodlines.
Yeah, uh, there's a dash line that goes through here that. We have to, it's obviously kind of a visual mapping and stuff, so it's not exact, but there is a line on there that shows approximately where the flood.
And then I have one other question. How is that property being taxed right now?
You'd have to get a hold of the tax assessor at this point and find out if the two lot subdivision, though it being taxed two lots. How it's being taxed or what it's being taxed at, you'll have to get with the town assessor and find that information out. I do not know that information. But they will certainly uh, provide that information to you.
I agree.
I. It may be online somewhere, whereas I'm just about a hundred percent sure. There may actually be online with the uh. Well, it, it may be online, but the best bet is just call or stop in and see, um, our assessor. They'll let you know. Okay, so with that, we're. Oh, we got one online. Do we have someone online that would like to uh, provide any information on this application? We have anyone online that would like to, uh, to talk to us about this application?
Yep, so my only feedback, I'm Catherine Fafon-Moyer. I'm at six, two, two, six, Pheasant Crossing, is that that land has been, um, pretty wildlife. I mean, the front edge has been mowed. As far as I know, for the past several years, but as far as the environmental impact, we do have quite a bit of wildlife. That comes along the back up from the creek. So I definitely think that there would be an impact. In that regard, um, to start disrupting and moving all of that around. And depending on how those structures and how far back and how far up they go, there would be some impact, um, in that regard environmentally. Not a scientific background, but just an observation from living in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I believe one of the questions that will be asked is, is there any. Uh, endangered species or anything like that that might be impacted by that? I'm trying to think, Ron, off the top of my head, what some of those secret questions are, that they would address more. You know, endangered or critical species or things like that.
Oh, they asked the question about habitat.
Yeah. There'll be a habitat question on the. Thing. And, and again, the part, the, the part of seeker, just so you understand what seeker's process is. Is to address environmental issues. And it's now. Now mitigate them to the point that. It's a project that either is acceptable or not acceptable. If you can't mitigate things, then you would. Say no, but if you can mitigate them, if you can come up with ways. To mitigate the, whatever the environmental issue might be, or depending on how critical that issue is. Um, that's the way the state wrote the environmental rec, review act. Did you have anything else for us, ma'am?
No, thank you.
Okay, um, everybody had a chance to speak, I believe. So the next thing is we'll turn it over to the board. Any questions from Aaron? Adrian? And I think I spoke enough, so I don't need to say. Indisruptible. So the next item up is we have a resolution. To classify this action as unlisted. And declare the planning board, uh, as intent to be the lead agency. Um, and I believe in there, there is a. Type of correction that I think. We're gonna take care of. So with that, the applicant is, well, again, this is the classification issue, so. Do I have someone to uh, waive the reading and approve this resolution and present? Move, babe. You're second by.
Aaron.
Aaron, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call, both please.
Katie.
Hi.
Anything that was.
Hi.
All right, so. We have classified it as unlisted. We've declared our intent. That will be forwarded on to the zoning board of appeals for their meeting. When's your next meeting? Monday, Monday? Okay, so their next meeting is Monday. They'll be able to say yea, yea on the uh, lead agency and we'll talk about that. And then. We'll come back and uh, continue the public hearing and uh. Go from there. So the next item up is a resolution of continuance. To which date did we put there? August.
That can, I believe.
It sounds as though that's gonna happen, so.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I would guess that it would. If for some reason it didn't. The ZBA didn't want to give us that information right away, then we would have to. Open a public hearing. The ZBA didn't want to give us that information right away, then we would have to open a public hearing, take comments. And then continue it again. That's the process we do. Is it, was it the second they're done? We put it in the second, so this is a continuance to the August second. Um, do I have a uh, yeah, do I have a motion to uh, approve that resolution?
So.
Move by Aaron, second by Adrian, any other comments? Click, take a roll call, vote please. Aye, okay, so now we've continued the public hearing to August second. So if you wanna come back to this exciting meeting again, August second is the next opportunity to have a public comment. Um, on this application, um, what we would probably do at the next meeting is. Go ahead and uh, accept, establish ourselves as the lead agency. And then begin the process with the applicant of working with staff to ensure we have a complete application. With everything we believe and staff believes we need to review the environmental record, that would be the next step, correct, Ron? Okay, so hopefully, I I hated to kind of go into that much detail, but you need to understand the process. Cause it is a process. Um, we've gone through some very lengthy processes like this. So, all right, with that, we're going to move on to a next item on the agenda. You guys can stick around and enjoy the entertainment value, or you can take off, it's totally up to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you can turn the speakers on.
I turned it on, yes, I did. Okay, thank you for coming by, we really appreciate it, thank you for the presentation. Um, Stephanie. All right, have a good one. Okay, the next item up is final letter of credit release for Auburn Junction Phase Three A. We have all the documents we need for that, everything's taken care of?
I believe it is.
Okay, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the final LOC for Phase Three Auburn Junction? Move by Aaron, second by Adrian, any other comments? Click, take a roll call, move. Aye, we have the same thing for safe place storage. Any, everything's good to go on that one? All right, do I have a motion to uh, approve that letter of credit release? Move by, any second by.
Aaron.
Aaron, any other comments? Click, take a roll call, vote please. Okay, next item up, open discussion, Ron.
Yes, um, the town board next Tuesday night will be. Uh, hopefully considering the uh, or uh, the environmental record. For the Farmington Market Center project.
Right.
And uh, taking action to make a declaration on that. Um, we also have a uh, draft resolution now that's out there. Um, for approving the rezoning at a future date. Farmington Market Center. Um, we have um, not heard any more from. The three applicants that came to the PRC with concepts, or at least I have them.
Correct. Um.
I understand.
And more night, the ag advisory committee is meeting. And they are taking up the discussion on agricultural conservation districts. Um, the new zoning district to replace. Um, what right now is a combination of A eighty and R R eighty. Uh, criteria.
Okay.
So that's it, the only other thing, I think, that's new that just came in yesterday. And that was the FEMA mapping has notified us that there's more properties in the town. That they've had a letter of map amendment on, which they will be providing new documents and depending on. That it'll be a public process, public will be made aware of what's going on. And we probably will end up changing the code, because the code is based on the nineteen eighty-three flood insurance study. Not any amended maps or anything like that.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Hey, Dan.
All right, uh, your next meeting, you have two final site plans, uh, one on Town Line Road and one on New Michigan Road. Uh, again, those are finals, you've seen them already once for preliminary. And then you uh, now have just added to the three lot re-subdivision.
We'll get it.
Yes, to that meeting as well. Um, on other notes, we've been very busy, uh, Ron has kept us busy with a bunch of projects, RZ. And uh, you know, uh, we are short handed, so.
I would say that if the Fowler team reaches out. Please provide as much information on what we are going to require then to do. Most important thing for BHC is where they're gonna site those, what their proposed sighting of the houses are. And whether or not that's gonna generate any additional variances um, in the process. Because that's gonna be critical to us doing this, as well as going back to the zoning board of appeals to the fact one. For three lot, now all of a sudden, they're gonna maybe generate three or four more variances besides that back, front, that back and everything else. So, and the other one that I am very concerned about, and we've kind of mentioned it, is with the steep slopes in the rear of these properties. We need to make sure that they understand that at least my goal will be to put some restrictions on these. Um, site plans that will not require, that will not allow rear accessory structures. Um, whether or not that passes all of the requirements or not, but it's really important that we don't allow. For them, we don't give false, um, well, we don't create a situation where whoever decides to buy and build. Thinks that they're gonna be able to do something that they can't do. But we need to be very careful, I think. So if they reach out, provide as much information as you can, please. Fire, anything from fire, Montarl, you got anything else?
Yeah, so uh, chairman, as I informed you, highway wasn't gonna be here tonight.
Yeah.
He did, said he's been very busy the last few days paving, so uh, that's why he's not here tonight. And town engineer had a uh, conflict with another township uh, that he needed to uh, go to that meeting. Uh, we were gonna be sent a different engineer, but.
But I relish them both, because I want them to be here.
But they they both were trying to be, but that's just the truth.
And I appreciate you. Anything else?
That's it.
Fire.
Oh, a lot of the same stuff, automatic alarm, car accident.
Yeah.
Last week in the night, we had a water issue to deal with, nothing like that.
Ooh, yeah, I thank goodness for that. Although I I do know that some of the backyard there in uh. Uh, often, was it Mud Creek or whatever there, they certainly water all the way up to their sheds and stuff like that. It was really roaring out, or I know I saw some pictures of it.
Our primary issue was water coming across Town Line.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, I remember that one, yeah, they, they, they did have some, some flooding.
We had a uh, wall collapse on one of the buildings.
Ooh.
In the basement.
Not good, not good.
Okay, ZBA, any comments? Hopefully that, I mean, I tried to make sure that there were the expectations of what the residents and the applicant heard. Were some, were in conjunction of what you guys are probably gonna be dealing with, so. Wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same tune here today, for shame. These are tough ones because people get off on tangents, and at least tonight, they were very careful about making sure that they stayed focused. So that's the biggest goal of of playing this role is trying to keep them focused on what we're talking about, so. I thought it went pretty well, actually. I appreciate all the work from staff and everybody else. And the work you guys have done up to this point, I really appreciate that. So with that, um, certainly I've dealt with the staff on a number of issues since we're rolling forward, but. Uh, the three, I did attend the PRC and did see the three um, um. Preliminary or what's the word?
Consets.
Concept, uh, or three separate ones, let me, let me remember, oh, go ahead, tell me what the three are. So I don't try to.
A water park?
Water park area.
Site.
Basically housing, basically.
Yep, AP plumings, uh.
AP plumings, everything in one, yeah.
Uh, three thirty-two in Beaver Creek, and then you have the solar, uh.
Oh, the solar in between Safe Place and the uh, Millworks. For the thing back in here, so, and then, you know, I didn't see anything there, so I thought all of them were. Pardon? And then they'll finish Town Road and they'll be on both sides. Um, certainly the uh, apartments, uh, we certainly gave them a lot of feedback, very dense. They were gonna have people backing out onto Town Road, we said that wasn't gonna happen. Yeah, they were gonna put driveways backing out of the Town Road.
Oh, yeah.
And that's gonna be a problem. So, yeah, a lot of stuff going on. With that, any other comments? Yes.
Um.
Want to change my uh, attention, uh, with conscience. Hi, so I'm just curious what happened with that.
It's still under review by staff.
Um, engineers.
And the town engineers are now involved in that as well. So there is no verdict at this point, we're waiting on MRV to give us some reports.
Um, so they are, they are looking at the fact, looking harder than that, it's loose system on the change of the facility.
They are, uh, they're looking at pressures and volumes, um, they're looking at the concerns of um. Piping in the ground as well, so they're trying to consider all avenues here and what would be the best. And that's what MRV is working on. Both, to just put it on the record, both plans, the field change, what they're showing, and then what we approved. Are both code compliant.
Right.
Um, they meet the minimum, the the question more here is with volume and. Uh, of 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 water supply and what the fire department has for trucks and what they can pump at, so. Um, that, that's the bigger question at the moment, it's still under review.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, so that's what our engineers are looking into.
Anything else?
Yep, Dollar General has started this week, uh, they are installing their new water main and their new sewer main. Uh, that goes to the, or laterals, I should say, that are going to the buildings. Um, they are hoping to start putting steel up within a week or so. GLN is just the way you wanted it, clear cut and nothing being built. I think that's exactly what you said when we approved it.
Okay, motion secured by Aaron, second by Adrian, all favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.